All right. Howdy, everybody. Welcome to the MSAD 15 School Board Workshop here at the lovely Pendle Complex in Gray, Maine. Why don't everybody join me in a pledge of allegiance to get things started? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We do have a quorum here. I don't think we have any voting items tonight, but in case we do, we do have one, and I'm going to declare one. I know where Gary, Misty, and Jason are, so nobody is mysterious. Gary should be here shortly, he said. Our next budget workshop is a week from today. We're at the high school library at 6:30 PM. We'll have that livestreamed as well. We don't have any old business. We're going to go right into a budget draft presentation, but just to remind people what we're doing here. We have seen all of our department reports at our budget workshops thus far. So we know how the previous year went for all of our departments. We know what their goals are for the coming year. We should have heard from them, potential new spends, potential new reductions. In the finance committee, we kind of rolled all of those up, looked at all the requests, kind of saw the biggest possible budget. If we took all requests for new funding, what would it look like? We gave some feedback to Diane, and we are now getting the very first draft presentation of the 2425 budget. This is in no way meant to be the final draft, right? What we now have are opportunities with all of our administrative staff in front of us to interrogate these numbers, ask questions. Why do we have these requests? What could we do differently? Questions of clarification the administrators might be able to ask right here in the moment. If the question is substantive, that's why we have another meeting a week from now. We'll ask you to put that on the parking lot, give the administrators a little time to do any research that they might have to do, go find any numbers, whatever it happens to be. And then they'll come back, and next week we'll have a further round. We'll have those parking lot questions answered, hopefully, and we'll try to come to some kind of consensus on what we'd like the recommendation to be from Craig when we have to consider this in its final draft. It's going to go back to the finance committee at least one more time, so they'll have a look at it. And generally, between Craig and the finance committee, the finance committee gives us that final recommendation that we'll consider. I think it's at our April 26 school board meeting. It's that last Wednesday in April, whatever it happens to be. We voted through there, hopefully, and then in the first meeting in May, we vote to prepare the warrants and send the articles to the towns for the budget referendum. Although we do actually have a budget referendum town meeting, which is on the last Thursday in May. And then assuming the towns show up and approve that, then it goes to the vote on the Tuesday in June when we vote in municipal elections. Any questions about where we are in the process? All right, seeing none, I don't know why my chair is so low. Craig, why don't you get it started on the draft budget presentation? Maybe I can go.
Thank you, Stan, and welcome, everyone. For those watching you at home, this presentation will be put on our website if you would like to look at it there. And there is a section where all budget information is posted on the website at msad15.com. So tonight, this is the proposed budget. It's the first time the school board sees the proposal in full. We always like to begin with who we are and what we do as a school district. Our constituency is school-aged children of MSAD 15. We're guided by our mission, and this school board spent a lot of time this summer before last, spending at least two or three sessions reviewing their mission, who we are as a school district, what we believe in, what we value. So this is freshly updated by the school board. Our mission is preparing students for their next step and instilling aspirations through rigorous and relevant educational experiences. The strategic plan goals, we have strategic plan in four areas that guide everything we do in this school district. Some of the times, when I speak to the administrators, we talk about how the strategic plan isn't some extra thing we do. The strategic plan is the work that we do. So anything of value of importance is in our strategic plan goals. First goal is all learners in MSAD 15 will experience high-quality instruction and be able to determine skills for lifelong learning, demonstrate skills for lifelong learning, work, and citizenship. Second goal is all learners in MSAD 15 will attend schools that are safe, nurturing, and responsive to the social and emotional well-being of everyone. Third goal, all learners in MSAD 15 will attend schools that have high-quality indoor and outdoor facilities that meet academic, co-curricular, and other student services needs. And the fourth goal is all MSAD 15 employees collaborate and coordinate to implement highly functional operational systems for the benefit of our students. So the state funding. One of my buttons is sticking. I apologize. Oh, all right. Thank you. So state funding is based on the essential programs and services model. And that ED 275 is what it's euphemistically referred to, that everyone in the school business knows. Education funding is in the second year of the legislative two-year budget cycle. We're in the second year of the budget cycle. There'll be legislative elections this November. A new legislature will convene in January. They will create a biennial budget, and therefore, we know how much money is allocated, for the most part, on a two-year basis in main public schools. State funding, the essential programs and services model. Okay, and so I apologize, the computer buttons keep sticking. The local impacts include the valuation, student enrollment, as well as our disadvantaged student population. So the valuation of property, real estate in the school district is a major component of the EPS model. The value of the real estate in any community is part of the funding formula that the state uses. Student enrollment, how many students are actually enrolled in your school. And then disadvantaged student population. We get extra funding for those students who qualify for disadvantaged population status. Our preliminary total state EPS estimate for fiscal year 2025 includes a state share of 47.62% compared to 47.3% last year. The local share for fiscal year '25 is 52.38% compared to 52.7% in fiscal year '24. And the state valuation, the three-year average increased by 8.9% for a three-year average of the two municipalities in the school district, 9.6% for Gray, and 7.7% for New Gloucester. And our enrollment has increased by 27 students. We've put the same information on a table because I think it's a little clearer. So for fiscal year '24, our state share was 47.3%. For fiscal year '25, it will be 47.62%. The state, the local share will be 52.7% last year and 52.38% last year. The state evaluation increased by 8.9%. And the three-year average was 9.6% in Gray and 7.7% in New Gloucester. Enrollment increased by 27 students. So how this formula works in terms of how that affects the local taxpayer? The more value a town has for real estate, the wealthier they think the town is. So a town that has valuation that is quite low will be a high receiver in the ED 279. A community that has very, very high valuation will have a lower ED 279 funding. And so what's been happening in Gray and New Gloucester, as evidenced by the three-year average, is the value of homes and value of all real estate in the two communities has been increasing at a fairly good clip. And so that is one of the driving factors of the essential programs and funding formula. Disadvantaged population increased by 26%. This is mainly due to the state revision of this calculation. Previously, this was determined by free and reduced meal applications, which the state no longer uses. So during the COVID period, the state started supporting free lunch for all children. So we stopped collecting free lunch forms, but we tried to collect data from the students, and that became very, very difficult to do because we want you to fill out the form, but lunch is free anyway. So what's happened is the state has had to find a different way than free lunch forms to figure out the disadvantaged population. And from my understanding is they've never done this before. They have a hard time calculating a formula that works in Augusta. And so I think that this year, we were probably, we probably benefited from this, that we probably got funded a little higher than we should have on the disadvantaged. So I think they erred on the side of, to our advantage, until they figure out a more accurate way to calculate that number. Okay, so our enrollments, the other big factor in determining the school funding. This is Memorial School for a four-year period. Our projected enrollment for next year is 281 students. I'm sorry, 181 students. And so it shows you the level of fluctuation of 15 students over the last four years. At the Russell School, the enrollment for next year is 209 students. Pretty steady enrollment over the last four years. At the Dunn School, 345 students. It's increased substantially by 19 students in the last four-year period. The middle school is 511 students this coming year. And the high school will be down to 574 students. As you can see, the high school has been decreasing. The, the school district has had a bubble working its way through for the last 13 years. And as you can see, that bubble has moved its way through. And so the population of our school district has declined. And we believe from demographic study that it's going to get down to about 1,740 students and should stay constant for 10, 10 years from the demographic study that we did. Enrollment projections show you through 2025. We are expecting enrollment of 1,820 students for fiscal year 2025. The proposed budget summary is. In fiscal year 2023-24, the budget was $31,276,816. The budget proposal that you'll see tonight is $34,222,624, an increase of $2,945,807, representing an increase of 9.4%. The budget increases district-wide. Salaries, including new positions, $1,574,704. Health insurance is yet to be determined, but we have put a 10% placeholder. We'll know what the exact rate is April 10. It'll be released by our carriers. All other benefits, including new main paid family leave that was enacted by the legislature, is $161,529. School resource officer, new vehicle, our share of that will be $44,088. And salaries and benefit percentage of the total budget is 82.4%. So as you see, salaries, health insurance, other benefits equal 82.4% of the budget. The entirety of the budget is essentially people. 18% of the budget makes up everything else. The fuel, the oil, the cleaning, the supplies. All other items make up 18%, but it's the people that are the largest part of the budget. Budget increase based by school. The permanent substitute is $33,563. That position had been paid for by ESER funding. And the ESER, this is the last year of the ESER funding. So to keep a permanent sub at Russell School would have to be paid through other ways. Local sources, $33,563. The other ed tech three to support K education at Russell School, again, would come off the ESER grant and would need to be paid for locally. And then the general ed social worker, 0.3% position at Russell would come off of the ESER grant as well. So these three items are being requested by the Russell School and would need to be funded in ways other than the ESER grant. At Memorial School, they are asking for the exact same things that Russell is asking. The permanent substitute that's coming off the ESER grant, the ed tech three for kindergarten coming off the ESER grant, and the general ed social worker one-third time coming off the ESER grant. At the Dunn School, they are asking for 0.4 general ed social worker, and that would come off of the ESER grant. New books for the new math curriculum for five years. The book program is for a five-year period. The $132,500 is paid upfront, but we have the books for five years. At the middle school, increases are the photocopier usage, equipment for STEM and music education, permanent substitute, again, had been paid by ESER grant, would now have to be paid by the local budget. And they too want to keep the general ed social worker that had been paid through the ESER grant, and that would be halftime position. And at the high school, they want to increase the attendance secretary by two hours a week. Dues and fees for international baccalaureate testing and the greenhouse, increase in dues and fees of $2,500. Dues and fees for co-curricular programs in Model United Nations and National Honor Society State Conference, an increase of $6,700. Again, the permanent substitute would come off the ESER grant, and that would be $33,033 paid locally. And as well, the general ed social workers, the halftime position coming off the ESER grant, $48,100. Athletics, the increase for officials to.
Craig, you can't skip special education. That's kind of a big one.
Sorry. Special education, assistant director position to increase by 0.5. So last year, the school board had approved a halftime special ed director. That had not been, that had been approved after the budget. And so the increases here would be the full cost of an assistant director. If the board were to approve a full-time director, it would be $129,280. Outside placements, that is for students who have disabilities that require services that we don't have the capacity to meet. We send to specialized schools. The increase would be $344,208. Instructional supplies would be $9,100. Ed tech two in the Gateway Program and one for the high school and for Dunn School would be $91,226. And building-based coordinator stipends that would come off the ESER grant is $16,104. Athletics, increase in officials, $2,400. Increase in supplies, $1,200. And dues and family, dues and fees for family ITs and team SNAP, increase of $3,000. Facilities, repairs and maintenance, increase of $15,725. Property liability insurance bidding will be done this spring, $14,725. And the equipment, replacing one of the snow blowers is $4,000. In transportation, a new van driver for special education is $45,180. Bus lease purchase anticipates some support from MDU on that is $34,000. Vehicle supplies is $25,000, and vehicle repair and maintenance is $20,000. In technology, cybersecurity support, there is a need to increase the cybersecurity, the security of our data, the security of the information that comes in and out of the district. We would have an increase of $8,666 for that, to support that program. The technology device refresh, four-year lease purchase would be $208,145. And then professional development for Power School and Apple certification increase would be $1,000. The budget increases for the school board and superintendent's office. The annual district audit will be $6,500. Dues and fees, membership in Main School Management Association, Main School Board Association, Main Superintendent's Association, those fees are increasing by $2,750. Supply increase of $750. And dues and fees, miscellaneous and staff support account increase of $3,000. New position of business manager is earmarked for $114,922. That would be salary and benefits package. And budget reductions, Memorial has a grade-two teacher. We've had a bubble, again, going through Memorial School. And class sizes are such next year that bubble's being reduced that we can eliminate one of the teaching positions that's been there for three years. High school, we have a retirement. We will not, we're recommending not to replace that retirement. As you saw, the decrease in enrollment at the high school a few slides ago, it is reflective of that, that we will have one less high school teacher for a reduction of $60,000. Technology repair and maintenance and supplies, a reduction of $19,645. Legal fees will reduce by $4,000. And debt service interest we're paying on bonds for construction projects that have happened in this district is being reduced by $31,578. Budget reductions, technology-related hardware and supplies, $23,280. Communication telephones, system lease, a reduction of $17,810. Communication telephones, system lease, a reduction of seventeen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Electricity, we have savings from the solar program we've been in for a few years, reduction of eight thousand two hundred dollars. Contracted services for special education, a reduction of five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. And nutrition, local contribution, reduction of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, reduction of thirty thousand dollars. Possible budget adjustments, so we discussed the health insurance earlier, that we will get our rates from the carrier in mid-April. And to let you know what that means, so if there's a ten percent placeholder, one percent equals roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars. So the placeholder's for ten percent. If we're lucky, it'll come in lower than that, which would mean lowering the expenditure on the budget side. On the expense side of the budget. The proposed summary budget. The expense budget for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four was thirty-one million two hundred and seventy-six, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Proposed for two thousand four, twenty-five is thirty-four million two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars with a change of, an increase of two million nine hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Adult education, last year, the district contributed a hundred thousand dollars to adult education. It is proposed again this year, a hundred thousand dollars with a zero percent change for a total increase, again, of nine point four percent overall. On the revenue side of the budget, the state aid, the ED two seventy-nine, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, the school district received eleven million five hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars. This year, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, the ED two seventy-nine is twelve million thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. So we've received an increase in the state funding by five hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. The district fund balance, last year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, the district used one million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars as revenue to fund the budget from the fund balance. Essentially money that would not be asked for the taxpayers to pay. This year, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, that is to be determined. That's one of the big decisions the school board will have to decide. They will look at the fund balance, what is the state of the fund balance? And what amount of the fund balance would they want to use for the revenue side of the budget? Thus, reducing what would be asked of the taxpayers. So we've yet to determine what that change will be. And then miscellaneous district revenue, which might be students that pay tuition from other districts to come to our school, gate receipts that we might receive, people that might rent some of our facilities. Those all count for revenue to the district. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, that was three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. This year, we're projecting that we will have three hundred thousand dollars in revenue with a change of ninety-six thousand dollars. So the additional local required in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four is eighteen million fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. We're unable to determine what that number is this year until we complete the determination for the fund balance. So our budget history, going back ten years, the percentage change in budget increase. You can see the average, including this proposed budget, is at four percent increase. So the school district has been pretty conservative in its budget presentations. Two thousand fourteen, fifteen was six point seven two percent. But many of the budgets that were presented by the school district, point nine one percent, two point one percent, four point eight percent, three point nine percent, one point six percent. The budget requests from this school district to the voters have been pretty reasonable, particularly in comparison to other neighboring school districts. The local tax impact will be determined once the school board finalizes the budget. So we will know the tax impact once all the decisions are made about what will actually be in this budget and what the actual final revenue for this budget versus expenses. Then we'll be able to determine the impact for the local taxpayers. And did I? Okay. So the funding formula valuation, a three-year average for Gray, Doublouster. In two thousand fiscal year twenty-four, seven point one percent increase for Gray and four point eight percent increase for Doublouster. The fiscal year twenty-five, three-year average for Gray is nine point six percent. And for Doublouster, seven point seven percent. The valuation of the property over three years, the increase in Gray has been one hundred and thirteen million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And in Doublouster, forty-seven million two hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars with a combined increased valuation of one hundred and sixty-one million sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven, sixty-seven dollars. And this is our budget timeline, as Sam had shared with you earlier. And so you will complete the workshop tonight. There'll be another workshop next week, followed by any tying up of workshop work with the school budget vote on the twenty-fourth. Then the school board meets to sign the warrant articles, which will be posted in the community. And then the town budget validation meeting, which will be held at the high school cafeteria. And then the budget referendum and the validation of the new budget by the new school board on June twelve. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to the chairman of the board.
Thank you, Craig. Everybody has the presentation on their laptops, so you can refer to it. I think first we'll start off with just clarifying questions. Are there numbers or references in the document that anybody just doesn't understand what that is? Any clarifying questions before we get into the whys? Go ahead, Fran.
Team Snap, what is that on the athletics? I'm not sure I know what that is.
Team Snap? Yeah, 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 people are watching. You gotta make the viewers, you know, happy.
Team Snap is a communication-based app, basically. So it's one package deal where you can communicate with your team through email, through a chat. And it takes away the opportunity for coaches or others to text. So you can schedule things, email, group chat, et cetera, through this one platform.
So why isn't part of the email that the district has? Why is there a separate?
Yep, so the email piece, yep, so the coaches do email right now. However, texting should not be done between coaches and students. And this is just an opportunity to increase communication between students and coaches without the need to text, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions, things that just don't know what they are? Go ahead, Cole.
This might fit in this category. I just was looking at the van driver for special ed, is that not, is that something other than transportation, I guess? I just see it listed differently.
Is the, is it double-listed, you mean?
I believe that is a new, that is a new position.
Right, so the van driver in transportation, that is not listed in the special ed increases. So that's separate from that? Or is it double, just make sure it's not double counted? Yep. Other clarifying questions? Take your time. All right, well, you can ask clarifying questions, you know, as they come up. Let's get into some of the substantive questions. When we look at the salary increase in total, we have the one point five million, that's the salaries including new positions. Is there, and this might be a parking lot question. Is there a way to break that apart to see which piece is just normal increase of, you know, the contract that we're negotiating and step increases? And then how much is actual just new positions? Can we break those into two pieces for next week? Other, I have a bunch, but I'm gonna open it to the floor. Other questions of the why variety or the, could you provide more context for the request variety? Go ahead, Cole.
Last year in the budget, I remember we had in there for the SRO vehicle, we put it in there, that got delayed. I see it in there again this year for that forty-four thousand. What happened to that money last year? We did not budget, we ended up taking it out?
Yeah. That was like one of the last removals we made. I think a parking lot question that's worth having is looking at the all-in cost of the SRO and hearing from the administration next week on their opinion on the return on that investment. Just making sure it's a, it's a big spend. Could we do something different with private security? Or, you know, just talking a little bit about the perceived value of that spend, make sure that it's appropriate.
I have a question with that same line on the SRO.
Yep.
So we have an agreement that that person works for the district while the students are in school during our calendar. After that, they work for both towns, Gray, Engham, Gloucester, or just Gray?
Just the town of Gray.
Okay. So who negotiates the salary and the automobile for, the vehicle for the SRO?
They basically give us a price tag. But I think that can be part of the parking lot question is how we develop that total money.
I think I need some, get a hold of, handle on that.
I just, I, I think it's worth having a ten-minute discussion on what the all-in spend is on the SRO and how that's determined.
Yep. So Sam, you had given us a directive to separate out the new positions from the total budget. So the teachers, the employees that already exist, and then separate out the new positions. Now, this year, it's unusual, there's sort of a shaded area. We have positions in the Esser. Would you like any kind of delineation?
No, because we have the Esser delineation.
Yeah.
So I think it's just, just, what are we adding in terms of like bodies? That's on a slide?
Yeah.
The Esser one is.
Yeah.
But there, there's a slide on just pure new salary?
No.
Oh.
We got business management, yeah.
Right, I know. So we have the, we have a roll-up of all the Esser spends that we're bringing in, so that I understand. I just wanna see like new employees versus, yeah.
I slightly disagree. I, I, I think we do wanna see-
About three columns?
Yeah, because the gray area, I think, that Craig is talking about is they are bodies in our district right now. So it's not as straightforward as a new position because not funding it means people will go away. And I think we wanna see, is that what you're saying?
That's what I was suggesting, brand, brand new, Esser, and then people that have been here.
Sure.
Right, so they're not new, but paying for them would be new versus brand, brand new.
Yes, I was just saying I already have that number, so I didn't need that number.
I'd like to see it.
You wanna, wanna include this time?
I do.
Okay. That's great.
I have a question.
Yes.
Along the, those lines, I know we talk about, we've seen the past couple of years, money that we budget for that we end up kind of not spending because we can't hire the person. So I'm curious about some of the requests of, that would be great to have, like the Ed Tech, you know, the high school, two new Ed Techs, for example. So of the ones that are in the ask, do we anticipate being able to fill them?
So one of the things that we've done over the last two budget cycles, definitely last year, maybe the year before, is these positions that we have chronically been unable to fill and, and we've budgeted that and the town, the, the school district has passed those budgets, we reduce those. Like, we're advertising for few based on the fact that we're never going to fill them all. And so I believe to answer your question is, we're going to do our best to fill all those positions, and our intent is to fill all those positions. And there's not like five or six slots that we're asking for that we know will never be able to fill. So there's much more truth in advertising than there was a few years ago simply because the workforce isn't there and we're not asking for people that we know we can't fill.
So regarding the ESR funds then, seeing as you were looking at me.
Well, I was just looking both sides, looking both sides. Go ahead, Jim.
It's not a huge item, but the miscellaneous district revenue was dropping by almost twenty-five percent from almost four hundred thousand to three hundred thousand.
My guess on that is that we've had a big bubble of Raymond kids coming in, getting extra tuition. And it's the most, we, the last two years have been the most we've ever seen. And my guess is that we don't feel like we can rely on that because it's a little bubble of friends and it looks like it's maybe moving out of the district.
So we've, we've recruited hard the Raven kids and we've gotten, they have a choice of Wyndham or here. If they come here, they pay tuition and they have been popular. Kids have liked coming here the last couple of years, but we think that's going to go down. And we think once the brand-new middle school opens up at Wyndham, brand spanking new building, that we might need to be prepared to have fewer.
All right, thank you. I think this is not, you guys can tell me if you want this to be a parking lot question. But I think there's a fundamental question that I would like to hear from the administrators, just so that we're all considering it in terms of the Esser funds. One of the things that, and we talked about this in the finance committee as well. Right, so the Esser funding philosophically was targeted to help school districts get through the COVID pandemic. Regardless of your opinions on whether we remain in that pandemic or that pandemic is over, it really doesn't matter. The federal government has told us, we're not giving you any more money to deal with the COVID pandemic, right? So what we tried to do as a district was, well, A, by law, we had to target it at COVID response. But we tried to target that COVID response on things that were relatively short spends, right? Outdoor structures, you know, the basketball court, you know, things that we, or HVAC system at the high school that we sunk a million bucks into. We tried as much as possible to keep salaried positions out of that spend because we knew that, you know, we would have to find some way to keep funding those positions once the Esser money ended. So I think it's worth hearing, I think we've heard it in our presentations, but I think it's worth hearing in this budget presentation on, for instance, the permanent- on, for instance, the permanent substitutes, right? The idea was the permanent substitutes, a little bit of a COVID stopgap because we would have more people out, harder to find substitutes. If I'm an older person substituting, it's the middle of COVID, I probably don't wanna go into a school because I'm worried about my own health. In theory, you know, we're on the other side of that. Why can't we go back to, you know, the normal substitutions that we all remember from our own schooling? Um, the general ed social workers, we've heard in your presentations, I'm not saying that I have not heard that, but I think it's important to, when we're on camera and, and when we're having this discussion. You know, we didn't have those positions before the pandemic. Why do we need two full-time general education social workers? I, again, I, I think everybody on this board has heard a little bit, but we, this is something that's being recorded, it's something the public will watch. There's some big numbers attached to these spends, you know. Does any of the admin, we can do it as a parking lot question, do it next week, but I think you guys know the answers to these questions really well. Do you wanna just speak to why these requests are so important? And, you know, with all of the preamble I have just offered, uh, you know, why we, we really need these positions in the district? And again, we can do it next week if you wanna coordinate. Sorry to put you on the spot, Jeff.
No, I'm good. Um, so, the social worker positions are actually something that we're asking for uh, and have had a need for, for quite a while. Currently, and I can't speak to the numbers at the high school, middle school, I don't know if they have those, but, uh, the social worker that we have at the K-4 schools, uh, has thirty students on their caseload across three buildings. Those, uh, you know, that's pretty high, especially when you're talking about, uh, being at Dunn two days a week and a day and a half at each of the other two buildings and trying to fit thirty kids in. You know, I think what we're seeing is, and how, why I value that, those positions is because, um, when a student is dysregulated, uh, and, you know, we have social workers for special education students, but we have other students with similar needs, uh, who maybe aren't special education students, don't require specialty design instruction, those types of things, but still, um, struggle in a classroom setting at times. When they become dysregulated in that classroom, uh, it disrupts the learning of everybody in the room, right? It can throw off a classroom, it can throw off a general, uh, you know, general setting within the building. And that social work, uh, position helps those students build skills that will allow them to navigate those environments and maybe not throw all that off, right? And we see a lot of things, um, you know, students coming to us with lots of, um, trauma and things like that, that impact their school, right? Uh, we approach those positions from the perspective of, um, students being able to access their education. And when they come with all of the things that don't allow that, we need that professional support to allow them to access their education and not disrupt the education of others. So, that's why those positions are so, uh, important. In terms of long, of, uh, permanent subpositions, you know, it is harder and harder in today's job market to find, uh, people who can, uh, or who want to sub or take some of these positions. Uh, they're just not out there. And if we can secure somebody we know is gonna be in a building every single day and we can move them around, uh, within that building and we can rely on them, then it, it takes away from us having to pull, might be administrators, might be ed techs who are suppliers, who are, um, providing services for students with learning gaps. Instead of having to pull them into a classroom or somewhere else, we know we have at least one person in our building that we can go to and we can put them in a variety of roles on a day-to-day basis, so.
Thank you. Any, uh, well, just while we have you there, just any clarification from anybody on, from that? Any questions, follow-up on that for Jeff?
I, I did wanna know how, how many staff members there are teachers, in other words, that we'd be using the substitute for, how many are in the district?
Oh, that's a great question. So, our Chanda, um, I'm.
It's in the budget. If you look in the budget at each salary, I'm trying to ask how many staff.
No, I'm, so, she's asking how off, how many people do we have out on a regular basis?
I can get that information.
Yeah, I think we should have that, um, it's a great park, parking lot question. As a piece of anecdotal evidence, this is a, I was in the office on Monday and I think Chanda told me that the Friday previous, we had fifty-four people out, which I think is one in six of our staff members. Uh, which I was floored by that stat, that's a massive stat. Uh, so the five building-based subs covers five, uh, that gets us down to forty-nine. Uh, so I understand, uh, please elaborate.
Um, we'll just, one more thought about the permanent subs, because Jeff summed it up so nicely. We also have more vacant positions now than we did in the past. So like, for example, at Memorial, we have four vacant ed tech positions in special education. So, uh, my permanent sub is often covering for teachers who are out, but when she's not, she's working in that role and fulfilling IEP obligations that otherwise we would not be able to do. So, that's been a really critical part of that role for us. And she knows the school, she knows the students, she knows the program, so she can step in and provide that support. So, that's just another factor, we've always had a vacancy here or there, but we have consistently had three or more vacancies at little more of schools, so.
We're currently at three vacancies and another unique, uh, piece to that position is that sometimes it changes over the course of a day. So, what we are doing is we are pulling that person and putting that position in to fill the most needy thing in the moment, right? So that might start in special education and then it might jump over to a classroom because a teacher has to go home because they are ill or they have a sick child. Uh, and, you know, at dismissal, we're changing coverage around again because now we need to go load kids into cars and we need to make sure that we are walking our five-year-olds out in a safe and, and efficient manner, so. It, it is a, it's a pretty crucial position. I can also say just, we did not have a permanent sub for the entirety of last year. Excuse me, um, we had somebody who started in the role and left mid-year. Looking back on my data today, when that happens at Russell School, I pull from my response to intervention team, the people who are helping the kids who have one of the highest needs. Um, and I can calculate, and we do it in half-days, we pull them for half-days at a time so they don't miss a full day of work with the kids that need it. Um, but I could count sixty-four occasions last year where I was pulling somebody from providing a service that's really needed for kiddos. Um, that's equivalent to just over thirty full days, um, of school, or almost twenty percent of the year was impacted, um, by pulling without that permanent sub. Um, this year, with a permanent sub, uh, that number is two full days. So, that has been really helpful for us. We've only lost two full days of intervention because we have had that position.
Um, the other thing that we wanted to talk about, uh, was our kindergarten ed tech threes, um, which was another ad that we did with ESSR funds. Uh, at Memorial, we've had some really robust-sized kindergarten groups lately, so it has been very helpful, uh, to have that person. What her day looks like now is she sees, uh, thirty different kindergarten students over the course of the day for all sorts of different interventions, sometimes in groups, sometimes one-on-one, to work on, um, kind of at a tier-one level to build skills that they're going to need for kindergarten proficiency and beyond. Um, she sees thirty kids and she has fifty-five sessions a day. Some kids have multiple sessions for math and for literacy. Uh, she also provides two and a half hours a day of support for things like lunch duty, recess duty, helping us walk the kids and off the buses, helping us put the kids in the car. Uh, and then about three and a half hours a day of that intervention support. So, although it's a position we did not have, although they did at one point in the past have some kindergarten ed techs, but it's been a while. Um, it's been a very useful role to us to take some of the burden off of our response to intervention team so we can focus a little more on our first and second graders there. But also to really provide kindergartners with that on-the-spa intervention they need to gain the skills that are gonna help them be successful K to twelve. So we're intervening early, uh, with the assistance of this staff person.
Part of that, um, it, it sort of falls into multiple categories as well. Um, there are academic interventions, so, um, in kindergarten, a big focus is on letter identification and letter sounds, um, you know, it might be some work around that. But it also is some other work, like kiddos might come in with, um, weak fine motor skills. So, instead of, um, you know, a teacher taking the time to work on that with a small group, we're able to pull that small group out and to do some of that small muscle work with kids um, and not disrupt the flow of the entire class. Um, that, speaking of that, I think behavior is another piece that we really rely on for that position. Kindergarten, uh, we get a, a, a good population from Dunn School that we know about, but we also get a population of students that we have no idea what their needs are going to be. Um, sometimes when they walk through the door in September, we're all caught off-guard a little bit. Um, and that person, you know, in the first couple of months of school, really helps to teach, um, school expectations, how, how to do school. Um, and really supporting kids in routines and procedures, things that they might not have experience with by attending, uh, our public pre-K.
Can I, uh, just ask you a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Uh, we heard, especially in the year after hybrid learning, that, uh, kids were coming to you guys, uh, with some delayed executive functioning, I believe is the metaphor, uh, that you use. Um, are we seeing any regulation in that? Is it a continuation of kids coming to us, uh, with sort of bad executive functioning? Are we seeing an improvement in that?
I think it's hard to say.
Yeah.
I, what I think we are noticing and we're talking a lot about is, it's becoming sort of a haves and have-nots situation where kids either really have those skills and they're really solid, or they don't have those skills.
Right.
Um, with, with kids attending, you know, pre-K programs, whether that be at Dunn or in, in private, uh, situations, um, if they've gone through that, then they've done some of that work already. If they are coming to us, um, from a program that doesn't emphasize that, or if they're coming from the home setting, not always, but, you know, they might come and, and not have any of those skills at all.
Right.
This person is able to help sort of bring them up to speed a little bit faster, um, than just, you know, being in the classroom with the other kids because eighty percent of those kids probably have those skills. The teacher trying to find the time to remediate that can get to be tricky when you're trying to manage, um, fifteen other kids around them.
I mean, I would say, in general, we've had an uptick in more unexpected behaviors, um, especially with incoming kindergartners. I don't, I think it roughly aligns to kind of back to our, our closure in the hybrid year. Um, thankfully, you know, with the support of positions like the general ed social worker and this kindergarten ed tech position, we can intervene right away. Uh, so it's not kind of a waiting game to see if we need to do some evaluations and that sort of thing, like we can put a plan in place for tomorrow to help them get those skills and get back into, you know, being able to be successful and building stamina for the school day. So, it just allows us that flexibility to really intervene quickly and effectively for our kiddos.
And the support in the moment, while we might be looking at things like evaluations or being able to put other supports in place for kids. It, it is very much in the moment right here and now.
The better work we do, uh, the more successful they're gonna be up through, uh, the year. So we try to really lay that strong foundation, especially in kindergarten.
Follow-up on that, Jim?
Uh, not that particular, not at all.
Uh, just while we have them up there, follow-up on that? Go ahead, Fran.
I do wanna talk about, um, computer use, um, for pre-K and K. Um, are you involved with pre-K or just K?
We're just K.
Okay, um, so, um, about how much time do they spend on, how many hours are they in the classroom, first of all? These are part-time students, right?
Kindergarten's full day.
Full day now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, how much time do they spend with, with the computers? And what are they getting when they use the computers?
It's, I, I would say fairly minimal, um, during the school day. Um, we recognize that kids need that hands-on learning, so that's what we try to emphasize in the classroom. Uh, but we do, you know, remote learning is part of our plan, so we do have to teach kids how to use that technology. Um, we teach them to use the, the learning platforms that we do, like CSO or, um, some of the other apps that they might use on those learning days. Zoom is a big one, teaching them how to, how to connect remotely. But for the actual, for instructional purposes, um, I would say, like, less than an hour for sure. I mean, maybe even less than an hour.
I think the recommendation for K to two students, probably pre-K too, is about ninety minutes a day or less. We're definitely under ninety minutes a day when we're in-person learning. Uh, but like Danny said, we do teach them some of those introductory skills so they can access things on their iPad, be able to work on a remote day and also so they're starting to build that techni, technology skill that they're going to need as they go up through the grades. But, uh, definitely, um, I would say maybe thirty minutes at the most, but it really varies day-to-day in terms of, we could ask the teachers, but it's not.
I, I think what we're trying to also do is to, to use it, um, in innovative ways. So one of our platforms, CSO, um, there's a, a component where a teacher can sort of push out some information, push out an assignment. Um, it's pretty user-friendly for the kiddo because the teacher can report, record their voice, they can read the directions to the kiddos, the kiddos can manipulate, um, things on their screen and submit it. They can also record a video or do voiceover so they can explain their thinking, um, which allows teachers to go back at a later time to listen and to, to interact with that. Um, it's, you know, a more modern, um, approach, like a worksheet, but, you know, allows kiddos to, to really talk about what they're doing.
They also take their assessments on iPads as well.
Jeff, I saw you jump up, did you wanna address the pre-K piece?
Pre-K, uh, just because the question was asked. Uh, we, uh, it's a two-and-a-half-hour day for pre-K. Um, and they do not use their iPads in school. They're strictly for, in case we are remote.
It's strictly for upsetting?
If we're remote, we have to go to a remote day. So, we have used them occasionally at centers in the past. We currently aren't doing that, uh, very much of that. So I would say, at, on average, we're about zero minutes a week on those.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, is yours ESSR-related?
Uh, no, it's, uh, special education.
Alright, can, I just wanted, so anything else about the sort of positions that are moving uh, from that, uh, sort of ESSR fund pot into our general fund pot? Any other questions regarding that? Alright, go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Oh, did you, I'm sorry, Craig, do you have something?
Just a, a commentary, if you look at the slideshow, I had a asterisk next to the general ed, social workers. We've been talking a lot about the ESSR positions coming off, uh, the grant and, and what do we keep or not keep, what do we really want, what do we don't want? And, um, we discussed it again last Tuesday as an administrative group. And the asterisk is to indicate that the general ed, social workers, are the biggest priority for the group in terms of, um, those ESSR positions and maintaining those ESSR positions. Because, uh, those really help keep kids in classrooms and they view it as really, really important. Is that correct?
Alright, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, the, in the special education slide on outside placement, um, I, you know, my wife's been a, a school psychologist, a psychological examiner for thirty-some-odd years, so I know precisely what that, uh, line item is. I guess my first question is, uh, since it's, represents about roughly twenty-two percent of what the total salary increases are, what is it, what is it an increase from? And how did you come to that number? Because I know you don't have any control of who moves into the district. I'm just, I'm curious to know how you, you got to that figure.
Do we wanna parking lot that or do we have that? Okay, we're gonna parking lot that, perfect, we'll have that for next week. Yep. Did you have another one, Jeff?
I had another one, but it was, uh, you know, uh, it was basically, if, uh, could you, particularly for the, uh, the public that might be watching, could you, uh, and I guess this is to the superintendent, could you summarize, uh, cost-saving measures, uh, that were undertaken that would, that prevented this, uh, request from being higher than it is?
Meaning budget-wise or special ed-wise?
Budget, budget-wise, just total budget.
So the process that we go through is, uh, we do our presentations to the school board. What, uh, what is it that we think that we need, uh, for the coming school year? And we look at things like student enrollment, uh, and so, for example, on student enrollment, wherever we see a position that doesn't need to be refilled, we don't refill. So there's two teaching positions that we're not going to refill, we're not going to, uh, refill this year. And, uh, when we ask for something, uh, usually we try and make it, uh, data-based. And so, for example, we know how many kids in the middle school will need a math book, how many will need a science book, how many will need an English book. And so, they go through a process.
And so they go through a process, the teachers and the director of curriculum and instruction, and they look at all the programs out there that they think will serve what they need for the students. And they might look at five or six different programs, and they do a cost-benefit analysis. How much does a program cost? How much does it meet what we need? Are there any incentives that we get from buying a service? And so we look for the same way when you buy a car or buy a big-ticket item in your house. We try and look at what is the best price that we can get for that dollar. The other thing that we do is we try and move around what is paid by grant dollars versus what's paid by the local budget. So if we are able to use federal grant dollars or state grant dollars and take it off the local budget, we can manipulate our budget that way to make a lower ask in the big budget process. So for example, you know, if we need a lot more reading instruction or if we need to buy reading materials, are we able to use title grant money instead of local dollars to pay for that? So we look at different ways like that to save money. On the operations end, we always put out to bid our oil, we put out to bid our insurance. So any big-ticket items that we need is done through the bid process. And again, we look for the best value for the dollar on anything that we have to put out to bid.
Do you ever, as part of that, next, look into outsourcing some services?
We have done that. And there are sources, we have used external organizations to provide some of our social services or to provide therapy for kids, whether it be speech therapy, occupational therapy. We've used external organizations for those kinds of things. I get requests from businesses that will come in and do services for you. Sort of a headhunter, for example, you can go with Lay Blog, buy your bus services, and you hire them. You develop a contract with them, they'll drive so many kids so many miles a year. And you compare and contrast, do you save money using those services? Some school districts do use those services. So we do look at external companies.
I appreciate it. I thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Clarifying question for, I think, Diane. On the facilities budget increase slide, is that over and above the three hundred grand that we penciled in for capital? Or is that part of that capital?
No, the three hundred thousand is still in there.
Okay, so this is on top of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any way we can make it part of the three hundred? Other questions? Go ahead, Cole.
I got a few. Increased attendance for the secretary at the high school. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? Increased salary for the attending secretary.
We want them to come every day.
Yeah, so just maybe that's a parking lot question. I don't think that's a big one. Kind of piggybacking on the first one that Jim talked about, the outside placement for special ed. And I'd probably have to dig back in my notes, I can't remember, but I remember last year we did something about that. Was hiring a position in hopes to decrease that?
We hired a behavioral analyst that we tried to make clear, we could not make any promises on would reduce our outside placements, but definitely part of the rationale was that it might reduce them. So before we get into like a million line items things, I think we probably want about twenty minutes on special ed increases overall, just kind of the matrix of that, because we have a request for a full-time administrator there, we have a request for a lot of outside placement, we have a request for, you know, the special ed slide I have is about six hundred K, and I think it's a little bit more than that. Fair Holly for twenty minutes and ten, fifteen, I'm not going to, you know.
Next week?
It's elastic, but next week, just like, just a granular, like, what's going on with the special ed budget? Because that is sort of a big year-over-year increase, and we want to just make sure we understand it. All right, is that fair? Rather than go into a million line items on it, because I think probably there's a lot to look at there. All right. Question on the bus. Usually, I think the bus, we usually get a notice that we're on the list that, hey, you're eligible for us to help you buy a bus, and then we usually buy the bus, because it would be dumb not to buy a hundred and thirty thousand dollar bus when the state's going to give us a hundred thousand. But it seems like maybe we have enough buses.
Yeah, we haven't heard whether we're approved or not.
Okay.
So it's on the list of.
Like you. Okay, gotcha. So I think just another, and the parking lot is getting rather full. It's like a boys' basketball game or girls' basketball game at the high school in terms of the fillness of the parking lot. But I think we just need like a ten-minute conversation on the general fund, where it is. You know, we heard in the audit that it's probably larger than it should be. So while Diane is absolutely right in what she said at the finance committee, that we should have the expense budget on lockdown, be able to justify every single one of those expenses before we talk about our revenues, because we should be able to, everything should be something that we need. I do think, in this case, when we're looking at a potential nine point four percent increase in expenses, it would be easier to stomach if I knew I could increase our rollover from the general fund significantly from last year or not. You know, because we have been sort of squirreling away dollars during the pandemic, understanding that this budget cliff is happening. So if we might look smart by doing that, and if we can roll over one point five or eight million instead of one point three like last year, that might make some of this expense increase a little easier to stomach. And I think there's good justification for that, because especially with the special ed position, I mean, the general education social worker positions, it is true that I think we used the ESER money to softland those positions that we wanted anyway. So if we could sort of pay for them with squirreled away money that we had in the general fund, that would make it more palatable to me personally. Feel like we kind of planned ahead a little bit. So I think we need to talk general, and I think we should talk about that early in the parking lot discussion. So if it's going to be flat, one point three, you know, I think we have to really examine. I think if we have a little bit more money coming over from the revenue side, I might have a different opinion on a couple of things. So, you know, because it's a big, nine point four percent is a big number. It's a generational number, and we really need to make sure we know what we're doing there. So that's a parking lot question, obviously. Go ahead, Fran.
Okay. I have a question on Susan Collins' procurement of funding for, you know, the sidewalks and all that in the area.
Okay.
And so it was announced, by the way, at the Cumberland Republican meeting the other night, too, her staff member was there.
You don't say.
And Benji Gray, you've lost him.
Is that germane to our agenda in any way, or do you just want to let everybody know?
Anyway, the point is that, so it's all around the county. This fifty K that we need to come up with from the school and fifty from the town, is that going to be in this budget or will be in the new year budget?
So we have already.
A approximate amount.
Yep, so we encumbered twenty-five thousand dollars last year. So that has actually already been put in a kitty with the town. And so there's twenty-five thousand dollars that we have to kick in this year. And I don't know where you have that in the budget, Diane, but we could choose to take that. So along with the general fund, we should also look at our capital fund. So that might be the sort of thing that we pull out of our capital fund, which I think has about a million dollars in it. Right?
Million four.
Million four.
Is that where it's coming from now?
I thought it was nine hundred thousand. Sorry, that's bad, that's bad. I should not. I just love it so much when you say you were right. It makes me, like, I glow.
It's fine.
You see me glowing? Yeah, that's great.
And on the excess in the ESER funds that need to be spent by, on September?
Yes, I think we have like a hundred and eighty.
Nine hundred thousand, that's what was nine hundred thousand, as I recall, roughly. So how is that being played out in this budget?
That's a good question for the parking lot, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But just for people who don't know what Fran is talking about, the housing and urban development budget was finally passed by the federal government, which unlocked a grant that we applied for that gets us about, it's actually applied for by the town of Gray, because we don't own the sidewalks in front of our schools, and we don't own the streets. But we agreed to help with the matching funds, because what it would do is give us sidewalks from Hanaford down to the developments on Route twenty-six and from the corner at Hanaford all the way to Libby Hill, and would give us a crosswalk across twenty-six and a crosswalk across Libby Hill Road and extra lighting, so that we would have a lot more safe crossing, especially in winter, from the middle school to the high school. So that's an excellent example of us trying to find funds wherever we can find them to improve the district campuses. Yep.
And if I can switch gears, the, I'm not sure if this is the question for here or for the curriculum meeting, but we, I guess this is going to be revamped from grades five and six and seven to eight for the reading program. And it's about a hundred and thirteen thousand, it's a five-year program, so that money, is that going to be in this budget? It wasn't clear at the budget meeting if that was already included in this budget, a hundred and thirteen. And then any books associated with those grades were excluded from this budget. And then look into the future, do the, will the other grades also be revamped in the tune of that kind of money in the next couple of years? I mean, so, so I'm right on that one subject, but, you know, there's a couple of questions we got to get.
So basically, a parking lot question on new curriculum spend in this budget and whether the ELA curriculum refresh that was recently approved is paid out of this year's dollars or next year's dollars? I believe it's this year's dollars? It's both, all right, so we'll get a quick look at new curriculum spend in the parking lot. Yep. All right, go ahead, Cole.
All right, this is my last one, I promise.
We are, it's not even eight o'clock yet, man, we're not on the clock.
But I'm not going to hold us up.
You want to see Survivor?
So one of my major questions for this year's budget was the IB program.
Okay.
Like I said, or I mentioned before, over the past few years, there's been a lot of talk about it. I'm not extremely clear on exactly what it is, but kind of maybe a small presentation about what it is, but I'm also looking at, you know, what is the total cost of that program for us? And what is our return on it? You know, the amount of students that take part in it, and then also that receive the diploma, stuff like that. And then what are the, what are the other programs out there? I know that, forgive me on my terminology, is it AP?
AP is another one, yep.
Yeah, okay, so just kind of the comparisons.
Sure. Something, yeah, so parking lot question on the all-in spend on IB along with participation and how it compares to our AP spend and maybe even our dual enrollment spend, something like that. Craig?
Yeah, I think it's been a while since we did that kind of report. We did a big middle school research project last year on IB. It might be time to look at, especially since you have new board members, the IB program is in the process now, finishing up its five-year review. So there are essentially multiple programs that juniors and seniors can access that you might call high-level courses, high-achieving courses, honors courses. And they are the advanced placement program run by the college board. We offer a few of those courses. We offer the international baccalaureate program, and there's two tracks. You can take one or two courses, or you can go for the full IB diploma. We have a dual enrollment program with the community and college system, where kids actually take a college course in the high school setting, and they get credit from both the school and the college. And we also have an early college program through the University of Maine system. So those are the four primary choices that a junior and senior has for advanced or elevated kind of coursework. And I think it's time that we bring it in so that you can see the four programs, what they do, how they're similar, how they're different, and how it impacts the budget. I don't think, between now and the budget referendum, that you would make big decisions. But I think taking a look at the program, what those four things and what they've done in the last few years and what we think they might do for us in the next couple of years, it's time for that report. I think in terms of the parking lot, I can bring you some numbers on what we're spending, but I think maybe September and October, a full layout of everything for, does that make sense?
That makes sense, yeah. And I also, you know, just looking at the calendar, this is something we tried to prep people for, is that I do have a little wiggle room in April. If we, you know, if the parking lot gets so robust that we feel like we need another hour or two hours, you know, we can wedge in another budget workshop, like the April seventeenth or something like that. So don't feel as though, you know, we need to panic to crash everything in there. Go ahead, Fran.
On the business manager position, I've done a little research, but very little. And is it proper to ask that we get some comparisons from other districts? So far, I find that there's no, there is not two positions in some of the districts that I looked at. But so, and districts that might be a little larger in population, so is any, who would get that information?
So the personnel committee received a report along those exact lines from Craig. We reviewed, basically, he looked at districts that are similarly sized, looked at the total overall administrator count. And on average, personnel committee found that we were about a person short in general on average. That was part of our recommendation at the last business meeting to create the position of the business manager. And that's why, you know, we got the recommendation from the personnel committee that we do have that position, and then the whole board voted to add that position. So I think, you know, going back in time and deciding yet again whether we want to add that position or not, you know, we could certainly do it within this, but I don't think we need to see.
I think we're a board of eleven members, and I think it's worth discussing further.
What's that now?
I said, I think we're a board of eleven members, and I think it would be positive to discuss it further. We got in that position, that's a big position, and the salary for that position is quite high.
That's true. We can certainly talk about it in the context of the budget, but I'm not going to ask Craig to go do the research again, is all I was saying.
Okay, so, okay, I'd like to have that report.
We can forward that report to you.
Thank you.
It's available in the Personnel Committee folder two Personnel Committees ago, I think, but I will send you the link.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Penny.
Actually, turning the same thing over in my head and saying, am I thinking out loud? Is it a parking lot question? Similar to what Fran's saying, I was like, I know we approved, we talked about the position, we approved the position, we saw the need for the position. But now we're seeing this budget where we're potentially being asked to make tough choices, and so I am thinking. And so I am thinking in terms of Craig's asterisk on social workers, of the positions we're looking to add, which, what's the return on investment in terms of directly to the kids? You know, or cost avoidance? If we don't do the subs, that money doesn't really go away, right? Because I assume every day you would still try to get a sub to come in for the day. And so, you know, what kind of costs are we looking at there? We're talking about the SRO. What types of things are we avoiding by paying for that? And social workers, what types of, you know, sort of costs or time out of the classroom? As compared to like additional administrators in terms of, you know, what sort of impact do they have directly to the kids? And coming into the same thinking that you are, Sam, that I know we're supposed to make best decisions on the expenses, but I'm very curious about the fund balance piece, because why have painful...
Well, one of the reasons is because if you spend the fund balance this year and we don't have it next year, then it's even worse. And I won't be on the board, so why would I care? But you will be, and that could be disastrous for you.
I like, yeah, agreed.
But yes, no.
Broadly thinking, you know...
You're right, we will certainly look at that. So I think, just to rephrase that, I think as we're talking about the new positions, I think that, I mean, so I guess I would like the administrators, as we're talking about new positions, to try to give us some sort of priority if we have to make decisions. So akin to the starring of the General Ed Social Workers, if there are new positions that people would like to advocate over others, that in terms of the impact they have on students versus... Non-impact on students, I guess?
Well...
I'm just trying to figure out what the presentation would be.
Yeah, that's where I said some of it's just me thinking out loud.
Right, well, why don't we just, we can have that discussion, certainly. But I, I mean, I think you're right. And I, so I didn't mean to be dismissive of the idea that we wouldn't add the business manager. I was just saying that we've seen the research and...
I appreciate that, yeah.
So, so I'll forward that along. But I absolutely, every additional spend has to be on the table.
Has to be looked at, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Exactly. Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on Cole's question about the IB again. I remember, I think, I don't know if Cole was on the board yet or not, but I asked Craig about, you know, what does the IB program represent as a line item to the budget? You know, because he wasn't really able to tease that number out, because I understand a lot of the aspects are kind of embedded in the regular instruction, so you really couldn't pull that out and give us a line item of the, you know, to have an IB program, it costs us, you know, four hundred thousand dollars or something. So, I don't know, is that, is that kind of what you're looking for, Cole?
Yeah, I think...
Kind of like a what, what's, how much is a program like that going to cost us? Or what would we save by not having it, or...
Yeah, no, I just was looking at, yeah, what the program costs us. I mean, like Craig just got to saying, it sounds like there's four different ones out there and, you know, kind of what the difference is in them, and then also what the cost is associated to each one of those.
It does seem like a lot of...
And what our return is.
It seems like there's a lot of cannibalization of that, of those programs on the student body in this whole.
I think, given some time, we can make a pretty good comprehensive report that tells you what the programs are, how many are served, what it provides for them in terms of a product, I'm graduating, I have this diploma, this credit, what does it mean? And then what, we can tease out what it costs.
Right.
I think that's ultimately what we want.
We can do that.
Right, I think that's something we have to consider. I'm just, you know, there may be people watching. We have obviously made commitments to many kids and people about the IB program in terms of next year and going forward. I think we would be, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of the piece of the budget that it represents, but I want to make assurances that it would be, you know, a pretty dire situation if we decided to abandon the IB program for next year. You know, we have a lot of kids that are working towards a diploma. We have a lot of kids that are in IB classes. It would be, you know, a pretty radical departure on our parts. Go ahead, Lauren.
So in addition to the actual cost for those four programs, can we also see the numbers on the participation?
Yeah, that's actually an easy part, we can do that.
And it's also in the data dashboard that we've been provided as part of these presentations. So we actually have that information in our email and in our folders going backwards. So we can go and review it ourselves if we wanted to, but we should also make sure to have it.
I never had this problem in high school. When you, you know, up until about fifteen years ago, here's your schedule. Now, junior and senior year, kids have many choices. They're consumers now, you get to pick. I wanted to pick up a bit on what Penny asked. Because I don't know, it's necessarily a parking lot question, but it can inform a parking lot question. General Ed Social Workers, and the principals can speak to the members, whether it's General Ed Social Worker or a regular social worker. Their role is to help kids that are having difficulty get back into class. So the idea is that they're not getting therapy an hour a day, every day. The idea is, we want you to be in school, we want you to be able to function, we want you to get back in school so you can learn what you need to learn. And that's the role of the social worker. So it is a direct benefit. And I think what our General Ed, these new General Ed Social Workers is, is recognized, there are non-special ed kids that have problems that need to be addressed to help them get into class so they can do their algebra, their reading and their writing. A business manager or expanding the number of people in the central office that are focused on finance and business? It's apples and oranges, but what it does get to, the fiduciary responsibilities of the district. And by increasing the amount of people that are doing the business office piece, we now allow more time for our Director of Operations to actually be in the field, in the cafeterias, on the grounds, in the buildings, in the buses, making sure that the kids that get all those services are getting the best possible service. And I think that maybe that hasn't been the case the last few years. And so there is some, the model that's being proposed would have direct support of students in providing them better services and better fiduciary oversight in the school district. And so, there you go.
Thanks.
If you ask me to choose between the ESR people and expanded business office, I think that's a complicated conversation that would need to be sent back to discuss.
I think he has...
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
I don't know, this isn't really a parking lot question, but are we, can we forward you additional questions? And I say that because...
Yes.
I'm having a hard time digesting a nine-point-four percent increase, having seen it for the first time, and the slides, having seen them for the first time. And this is, for me, this is the hardest budget I've ever looked at in all the time I've been on the board, because so little of it is direct construction. There are no teachers here, very few ed techs, except those that have been held over. We're talking about all, they're all sort of ancillary service stuff. And it's, when you do the, you know, the bullseye diagram of students in the middle and you work out from there, it's, this is a far less clear conversation. And I think, I need to think about it so before I even know what I want to ask.
Absolutely, you can forward questions. I would just say, you know, well, I mean, like I say, I think we can have another workshop, so I don't think we have one workshop to do this. But if we, if it's something that we want incorporated into next week's workshop, just questions by EO, end of day Friday?
Oh, yeah. Hey, just, I'm having a hard time getting past nine-point-four.
No, I...
And looking at all the other stuff that's there. And I understand there will be some offset as we roll money over. I understand that. This is the first, our first number. But it's a little more surprising a number than we've had in years.
You should have seen it at the Finance Committee.
I'm sure.
When it was larger.
I wish I had.
Yeah. Do you know who the chair of that is? Oh, is it you? Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's unfair by me, I'm sorry.
It's perfectly fair, I have no problem with it. But I just, I don't...
No, I, everything is on the table, absolutely. That's why we're asking a lot of questions, and we have, we have time to talk these things out.
Hey, we've, we've cut things far closer to the student individual experience than almost any of these. And, but at the same time, I'm not saying they're not important, but it's just, it's a different conversation.
My last question.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the bond.
Let's talk about the bond, yes.
The nine million dollar bond. The portion that if the tax fee is past that bond, have we already made, because that would be, the votes going in June, is that correct for the bond, that bond?
Well, I actually have good news on that. We have heard from the bond bank that if we so choose, we can move that to coordinate it with the bond that we'd like to put out in August. And so at our next business meeting, I am going to make a proposal that we combine those and set a date in August. So it doesn't have to be in June. But I think I'm predicting your question, which is, will there be additional debt payments that we have to consider in this budget for that bond if it passes? And we talked about that in the Finance Committee, and Diane believes that our first payments would probably not happen until the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle.
Just for the back end?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that explanation, okay. Being on the bond committee, and I have expressed this with the chair as well, the original date for the bond, the full bond with the additions to the school and that type of thing, was going to be in June, but we found out that that would be, you know, not possible because of all the work that has to be done and things that have to be looked at. And this leftover money by the, in that account, which I didn't get the amount, by the way, I'm still waiting for the amount left over for the architect. So, saying that...
The money that we allocated last year, that we had not spent all of, that we agreed to spend the rest of on plans.
I was wondering what that amount was, yeah.
Yes, I think it was about thirteen grand.
Oh, first I heard of it, okay. And it seems like you're making a factual statement that's going to be done in August?
I'm not making a factual statement. I'm saying that I'm going to bring that for consideration at our next business meeting.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda for tonight, because tonight we're talking about our budget.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
If you wanted to add something to the agenda, we could have considered it, but at this point, I think it's a little bit late for that.
Okay, I'll wait for the next meeting then.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Alright, other thoughts or questions for next week's workshop? Hearing none, do you have any final thoughts for us, Craig?
Yeah, I do. I, this is my eighth budget in this school district, and this is the most difficult budget. Prior to that, it was my first year when we had a convergence of charter school students, where the dollars follow the student, and a lower-than-expected EPS, and that was a very difficult budget year. Since then, most of our budgets, you know, we've had our ups and downs, but we have been able to have really pretty reasonable budgets. We, the budget we presented to you tonight, we knew would be a difficult budget. We know that this percentage is not going to go to the voters. We know that hard decisions need to be made between now and the next few weeks, that that percentage has to come down. Hopefully, a lot of it will be mitigated by the revenue side, the fund balance, a good insurance program quote. But we're not, all of us last Tuesday talked about, this is, this is what we're presenting, because this is what we're telling the board that we really, really need. But at the same time, we know that that number is too much to ask, that it is too expensive. And so we're willing to do the homework and answer questions and help you make, you know, tough decisions about how we can bring this percentage down.
I have one last question.
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
The way, as you see it right now, will Gray's share relative to New Gloucester's share, when compared to last year, will it increase?
It's going to be very similar, as I recall from the number I gave. It's going to be pretty close. Very little change.
There'll be, yeah, it's, are, the gray valuation increased at nine-point-six?
Greater than there.
And there's, so it's going to go...
It's going to bump up a little bit.
Last year it was like fifty-five, forty-five, and this year it's going to be like, you know, fifty-six, forty-four, something like that.
A little bit wider, okay. That's kind of what I thought, just wanted to confirm it.
Yeah, just back of the envelope, it's going to be slightly more gray. So Diane, I don't know if you're note-taking, or I can share, but just whoever is note-taking, Chanda's note-taking. So on the parking lot, I have breaking out what portion of the salary increase is just the natural order of contracts and steps up, looking at the SRO spend and return on investment, sort of comprehensive look at the special ed increase, an examination of the general fund and what's available to us, a look at just overall increases in admin asks, and just making sure those are making sense. An examination of overall new curriculum spend, a look at the spends on our various advanced programming, IB, AP, and dual enrollment, and providing a filter when we can to emphasize the positive impact on kids of those spends. Does anybody feel like I missed anything?
SRO?
I said SRO.
Oh, you did, I didn't do that. Okay, thank you.
I also have a tenant secretary.
That was part of my admin line item. But yes, I break that out.
The ESR funds, that, you said that, right?
The ESR funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the, breaking out the salaries. So that we have the sort of white, black, and gray in the middle.
Just that salary, it's not anything else in the ESR fund account?
Oh, oh, no, that's a good point. The plans for what's left in SR, ESR, yes, sorry, thank you, Fran.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, I think that should keep us busy next week. Alright, unless there's anything further, I would call for a movement, motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Alright, thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next week. We're in the library, but it will be streamed, so we'll see you.